Okay, so I'd like to call to order this committee, the whole meeting of November 27th, 2025. At this point in time on this agenda, I'll put out a call for any declarations of interest. Seeing no hands in the chamber or online, we'll go to business arising for minutes. Seeing nothing, we'll go to, we do not have any delegations scheduled today. And next we will move on to item five, which is to determine any items for separate discussion. So if we look at the consent agenda, we have four different reports listed under six. Are there any that council member or committee, the whole member would like to pull for separate discussion? Okay, yes, councillor McKay.
Yeah, I wonder if you could discuss more on six D?
Six B's and Bob? D is in dog. Dog. Okay, David, thank you. D is in David. Okay, so six D, we will pull for separate discussion. And anything else? Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands then, so it is recommended. Item six is recommended that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations and staff reports and that the correspondence be supported and received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. This is for items six A, B, and C. D will be for further discussion. So may I ask for a mover? Move by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Dobrine. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, so we'll go to the items listed in seven before we return back to six D. So we'll go to seven A. It's recommended that the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting minutes dated November 6, 2026, 2025, that should be, be adopted as presented and the following resolutions therein be endorsed. That the report E D T C P E D A C 1325 regarding the Economic Development Tourism and Culture Strategic Progress Report, November 2025 be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a secondor? Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by seconded by councillor Pringle. It's now on the floor for discussion, so I'll call up director Myers.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Warden. I'm going to start us off and then Scott is going to finish up with a conversation about Bill 60. I'm not touching that one. So we had another great Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting. It was really good. And I appreciate that it says 2026 in the minutes because I wrote this entire report as 2026 because we're so embedded in thinking of next year at this point in time. But this really was our final report to PDAC on progress from 2025. There will be another annual report, so our second annual report will come to you in January, February of next year to talk about everything from January through December. But this one goes from August to November. And it really was focused on our continued drive towards the progress around the theme of study in year two of master plan delivery. So since August, our team has been really focused on that study theme, understanding consumer behavior, evaluating site-specific readiness, analyzing broader provincial national trends and trialing new program offerings. We also talked a little bit about some of the lean work that our department has been doing. And we did our very first EDTC Team Building and Development Day, which we hosted as a grateful gathering. And we were on a bus and we toured South Gray. We will hit North Gray next year, but it was a really great opportunity to get out, get our feet on the ground, go see all the different elements of our department as a broader team and just celebrate together. So that was wonderful. We also did another training in November on lean. So we've now done four different, I guess, buckets of lean training, which we're getting more excited about every time we go down this path. And we're starting to use that work already, which is really exciting. So we did complete all of our job reviews and restructurings underway so that we can achieve that highest and best value for human resources. And that's something that we talked about yesterday in the Budget and Finance Committee. And we'll talk about it again when we go through budget in December. But the most notable improvements have been that we're really coming together to find more alignment right across the department, efficiencies and cross-departmental collaboration. So that's making the best time of our staff time and resources. In terms of priority one, leadership and collaboration, we hosted another successful economic development leadership forum. This was the largest one yet, the most energy in the room. I'm still getting my voice back from yelling over that crowd of more than 90 people who were very excited and engaged. So it's really nice to see this continue, the progress continue, the conversations, the education and training where we can all come together and share in that mindset to grow, to ask questions and to not be afraid to challenge one another. I think that's a really positive thing coming out of these events. And the fact that they now include all of senior management teams as well from each municipality is important. So we're all speaking the same language because economic development doesn't stop at an economic development title. It hits every single one of us. The Team Gray MOU, that is a project that has been on my plate and it will be coming to you next month as well. That has gone through a lot of conversation with your CIOs, with your economic development staff, multiple rounds of engagement. So we think that we're at a point now where we've got a good draft to bring forward and present to you. And that really is meant to kind of hone our skills working collaboratively. And so put something on paper that gives us a commitment as the county to each of your municipalities and your municipalities to the county and how we're going to do economic development and investment readiness together. So there will be a fulsome report coming forward in a couple of weeks. We looked at business retention and expansion, talked about sector scans and the ongoing uncertainty around tariffs, how difficult that is on our businesses. The one thing that we will highlight and we did talk about it then, we're not hearing the same kind of impact as other areas because we are diversified economy. That is something that all of our teams locally in your municipalities and at the county have strived for to make sure we don't have all of our eggs in one bucket. So even though there is absolutely uncertainty out there, we just want to know where is it going to land so that people can make decisions, those long-term investment decisions, hiring decisions around workforce, all of those pieces. That's where we're seeing the greatest uncertainty for tariffs. Our work with Georgian College is continuing. We had a great experience at AMO. I think that really landed well with the Ministry of Colleges, Universities, Research Excellence and Security. It's a long name for ministry, but they absolutely understand where we're coming from, the importance of our rural-serving campuses and what that means for the region when we have really truly fine-tuned exactly what programs are going to be delivered because that's what's needed here in this region. From the Business Enterprise Centre, Courtney provided a presentation on the work to date and talked about the trends that we're seeing. In those couple of months, she had 134 inquiries, 44 consultations were conducted. There were many workshops. There's a lot going on in the small business world. There's a lot of interest. Absolutely ebbs and flows and there seems to be a trend now going towards that, not necessarily a second career, but what can you do on the side, a side hustle as the economy tightens? That has been where we have seen some shifts happening. But the interest does not stop and bricks and mortar again is becoming more popular. So that is a positive. With Sidneyham Campus, we hired or we highlighted that we had in the month of September, more than 4,000 people came through that door. So it is going very, very well. A couple of large-scale events, there were 80 rentals during that period. And the Maker Space has also exceeded 100 members. So that was the goal when they launched within the first year. It was a year and I think two months and they made it to 100 members, which is phenomenal. So we're very proud of the work they're doing. Kalina also took us through a long conversation about data because that was a question that we had at the last PDAC meeting. So we came back with something a little bit more fulsome to talk about where are we focusing on in terms of those KPIs? Because really at the end of the day, we have the opportunity to decide what do we want to track? What actually matters to us in the work that we're trying to advance? And the focus around those KPIs was website engagement, brand awareness, visitor and business support and the storytelling impact. So there's lots of pages of details, if you want, in the report that you can take a look at. But all that to say, we've definitely seen dips in some areas because we're trialing new things. We've seen incredible and explosive growth in others. So that's why we continue to study and understand what is going to land. We also shared the new look of the Visit Gray website, which is very exciting. It's been 10 years that we've had the same Visit Gray website, the same brand. We thought it was time for a refresh. So Gather is now the new look and feel of Visit Gray as a whole. And finally, turning to Gray Roots, we talked about leadership and collaboration in terms of the expert stewards. We have officially officially launched the Gray Gallery, which has been years in the making. We received over $355,000 in federal support to make that project happen. We have set ourselves up for the long term. The way that it has been designed gives us the ability to change the look, the field, the design, the size and scope without having to rebuild anything. So that's what we were looking for was a sustainable build. And what that did was transition us from the old Gray Gallery had 94 artifacts. Now we have 304 artifacts in there. So the intent is to get more out to the public instead of having it in the back of the house where it's being protected, but now it can be a story around it and we can learn more about Gray. We also talked about the partnership with the corporation as a whole and hosting the very first Truth and Reconciliation Day for staff at Gray Roots, which was phenomenal. And we look forward to building on that event as we go forward. And then just the highlight around that lean project that we did in the summer for the village and the volunteer impact. We had over 1,100 hours, so 360 volunteer shifts over the course of the summer, which was averaging 40 shifts per week. And the visitation impact, we had more than 9,200 visitors through Morriston. And 5,414 visitors participated in the engagement activities, more than half of them actually hands-on. So we, we know that we've hit the mark and we look forward to continuing that next year. So as we continue to prioritize our programming and operations review, we're looking at how we do exhibits. We're looking at how we do events to make sure that we are doing the best that we can with fewer resources because we don't always need to go big to have a good impact. So that has been a real shift and a great round table to end out that meeting, listening to success stories from Georgian College and from others and just sharing initiatives for awareness. So I will end it there and turn it over to Scott to talk about Bill 60.
All right. Thanks Savannah. Good morning. Word mattress sauce and members of council. I realize council has stopped believing me when I say this, but I promise I will keep this one brief. I mean it this time. So at PDAC, we did have the, the Bill 60 presentation, which touched on the potential changes both in the planning sphere, the transportation sphere and the housing sphere. Council should be well aware of this because we had a similar presentation on November the 13th at the committee, the whole meeting. And, and just as a bit of an update on Bill 60, on November 24th, so Monday of this week, the province, Bill 60 did receive third reading. So we haven't been able to find a final version of the bill yet to see if there was anything that was changed from, from the initial draft that was released. But we are actively monitoring that. As you may be aware, if you were scanning your inboxes late Saturday afternoon, the county was able to submit comments. So thank you for council support in submitting comments to the province in that regard. And, and some of the comments we submitted were on the legislative changes in Bill 60 itself. And some of the comments were on some of the related consultations. So for some of those related consultations, there may still be avenues to, to go back and forth with the province and, and put forward Gray's point of view there with respect to those potential impacts, both positive and potentially negative on the county and the member municipalities. So with that, turn it back to you, Madam Warden, and be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, I'll look online and I will look over here. And I'm actually not seeing questions come forward. So thank you very much for, for bringing that information. It has been moved and seconded. We've also heard further verbal updates. So I'll call the question, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Next, we'll move on to item 7B. It's recommended that report P D R C W 6425 is received and that a copy of this report be shared to the member municipalities within Gray County and with MPs, MPPs for Gray, Brusso and Sound and Simcoe Gray for information purposes. May I ask for a mover and a secondor? Moved by councillor Nielsen and seconded by councillor Dobrine. It's now on the floor for discussion. And with that, then I will invite our senior policy planner, Liz Buckton, to come and speak to it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Good to be here today. We'll just speak to get the presentation ordered there. Thank you very much. Okay, minor technical difficulties, but we're on, we're ready to go. So thank you so much. Really glad to be here today. A little bit of a snowy day, but glad to make the, the trip over from Mayford where, where I am and my neighbor councillor Kendra has often made the trip. So that's good. We're in sync. So today I just, I, I wanted to speak through the report that has been shared within the package. This does offer an update regarding the Housing Action Plan and various actions that have been happening under that portfolio over the past year. And just for reference here, have noted the recommendation of that report, which is that it be received for information. And as noted that we will share that on to the member municipalities and the MPs and MPPs for their information as well. So my presentation will follow fairly closely in terms of the structure of the report. And firstly, I guess what I just wanted to offer is just a little bit of background information to, to see how we got here. So that Housing Action Plan of the county was endorsed by county council in August of 2023. There has been ongoing action by both county and local staff on that variety of actions since that time. And an update report was offered in October of 2024, so last fall in that regard. And I would just further identify here for notes. But may not be familiar, we did also have a report just back in September relating to some of the elements under the Housing Action Plan relating to surplus lands. And so the reports offered within the package, it's not a fulsome comprehensive report. We are looking at certain elements. And so I just suggest within and here as well that to get that most fulsome picture of all of the various elements of work underway. I would refer the reader to, to those other reports that are linked as well. So within the report offered within the package, we have split that out into two sections roughly in half. So the first focus of the first half of the report is regarding some select ongoing items that we've highlighted for an update. The second half of that report speaks to some of the more abstract actions that are identified within the Housing Action Plan. So they're not quite as concrete in terms of the specific things to be done. And those relate to nonprofit sector capacity building as well as exploration of innovative financial tools. And so I think with planning, we're always kind of living in two time spaces. So we're, we're, we're in the current moment delivering tasks and actions. And we're also have an eye ahead to the future and, and what opportunities might be there and how we position ourselves for those. So these two sections of the report speak a little bit along those lines. So what's going on now and where do we see us going in the future potentially as well? And I guess what I would further say is just around that abstract piece. You know, I think what is abstract today potentially is what is foundational tomorrow. So, you know, I do think this is important work and I'm really excited to get to talk about some of it today. So in that first half of the report, I've just really provided a brief update regarding each of the sections we spoke to. So firstly, 1.1 regarding surplus lands, staff just offered that that prior report has been brought forward. If you recall, that report was relating to some potentially surplus properties that the county owns in Markdale and in Durham and some ongoing work that we hope to do continuing into 2026 for those lands. So we have linked that report for reference if anyone would like a bit of a refresher on that one. With respect to item 1.2, so enhanced data collection and sharing. It's a little square on the slide, but it's actually a whole heck of a lot worth that goes in behind that. So what we've highlighted there is that there is an in-process growth management strategy underway. And I think Scott and I will likely be back to next council to provide some additional information regarding that process. But that is, through that process, we will be developing updated population, household and employment forecast figures for the county through 2051. And that underpins a lot of our long-term planning and municipal planning and infrastructure planning. So that's an important process. Following that, the intention is to complete a housing need assessment on a regional basis. So looking and pulling from some of the data from the growth management around unit demand, taking stock of, of existing housing resources that are available and doing some gap analysis around what additional built form housing might be needed for the go-forward. And data collection has begun on that and we speak to that a little bit in the report, some of the initial gathering that's happened. And then there is just, we've highlighted that there is ongoing discussion regarding housing-related definitions, data targets and monitoring metrics. That discussion is happening around the staff affordable housing community practice table. And I think that that will prepare us as we move towards that housing need assessment because I'd like to really present that information in a very tangible way that we can all move forward. So we've got clear definitions and clear data metrics to help guide us in monitoring our progress as we go. With respect to section 1.3 of the report, that focused on the Gray County Housing Fund. And so many thanks to our, our teammates in the housing department who helped with populating this section of the report. Within this section, we do offer some update regarding the county's levy-supported housing fund as has provided just shy of $6 billion in funding for a variety of affordable supportive and transitional housing projects over the past four years. And those have been itemized within the report by, by housing staff for us. They further highlight that there are some additional projects that are waiting in the wings for further funding, both locally and federally. And they additionally highlight that the Gray County's Housing and Homelessness Plan, which is prescribed and required by the province, will be due in May 2026 or revisions ongoing with respect to that. Regarding item 1.4, community improvement plans. So within the report, staff outlined that those plans are in place for the majority of member municipalities now at this time. And we do have a number of municipalities starting into an update process for those plans. County staff are encouraging generally consideration of an affordable slash housing slash conversion type of programs at the discretion of the local municipalities. And just to support that, we have had some early kind of cross-pollination conversation, just opening up the idea that we could be working a little bit together. And we've had some early discussion with the economic development local developers' table as well, just with respect to that. So I think we'll likely be getting together in January for a deeper conversation about how we might work together on those updates and streamline. You may recall from prior reports, one of the things that we had been interested in learning more about was the potential to have a CIP at the county level as well. And so we had set out to approach the ministry staff and it had some back and forth with them around process. But then that item has subsequently been included within Bill 16. And so that's gotten to be our monitoring, the status there. But I think if that element of the bill has progressed as, as it was written into the draft, then that potential appears to exist or will shortly that we could further consider how we might target or prepare a CIP for the county as well. And it's handy that these two items are on the slide together because I just, I just want to plant the idea that we've got a couple of different tools here potentially at our disposal. And so I think there could certainly be some further conversation regarding further targeting and how those might be aligned to cover a greater breadth of projects to support them. Currently, the housing fund is, is largely too towards most vulnerable populations. But we do understand that there is a range of affordability that is perhaps not well represented in our housing stock. And so perhaps the CIP might offer us further opportunity in that regard as well. Okay. And then finally, for that first half of the report, we've just spoken at a high level to ongoing work regarding planning documents and processes. As we've offered a sample selection of, of the type of work that's been happening. And so I think folks around this table would be quite familiar with that. If you've seen those documents, biolays coming across your desk locally as well. But largely that has involved updates to our various planning documents. We've certainly seen folks at the local level looking to include ARU, residential residential unit policies and permissions, addressing short-term accommodation, permissions and regulatory frameworks to get a good balance there. Particulating housing-related goals and objectives and targets, looking at height and density and intensification policies. And then creation of localized work plans to build upon what's included within the county housing plan. And so if municipalities are looking to further, whether do that work, develop those work plans. I just would say that county staff are happy to have a conversation regarding the Housing Action Plan and perhaps what might make sense for inclusion there. So I think we step into the second half of the report at this point in the presentation. And so as noted earlier in the presentation, the Housing Action Plan does include some expressed intent around nonprofit sector capacity building. I think a lot of the existing affordable housing across Canada was actually created by that sector or in partnership with that sector. And so I think they are a very important partner as it comes to affordable housing, community housing supply. A few thoughts that we shared in the report. So firstly, I think that sector building work is intended to go above and beyond and build from the ongoing work with the nonprofit partners that is already underway by the housing department and service manager. The Housing Action Plan does identify that, you know, there are some things that the municipal sector may not be ideally positioned, resourced or tool to do. And so it orients Gray County as a lead organization, but really does encourage community partners of all, all types, all of the sectors to be working together towards collective housing goals. And I think really that sector capacity building would be intended to support that work by community partners towards collective benefit. So within that report, we do outline ongoing networking and co-learning work and an emerging whole community approach framing for collaboration. We speak to community incubation of housing system components to support affordable housing creation. Discuss a little bit of the emerging sector skills building efforts that are in place in Ontario. And then speak a little bit to scale considerations for affordable and non-market housing. Speaking to some of the grant and finance programs that are available or pending relating to that. And I'll highlight a few things from that section in the next slides. I guess what I would say, so there's some things to go around here. So with respect to this next slide, I'll just extend my thanks to the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay. They have created the space for a lot of the learning and discussion to happen over the past years. And this work reflects work coming from that table together with municipal staff and council members who are often attending those meetings as well. So the whole community approach, if you've had a presentation at your local council by myself and Marilyn Studders from the institute, this may sound familiar. But I think we've been working to refine the wording and understandings here. And so we just highlight the whole community approach as a framing for how we might work together and highlighting certain areas of focus for local government sector as well as for community partners. And so on the local government focus side, what that learning and network, networked group has determined is really, you know, we would be looking to local government to target the policy permissions and incentives towards affordable and non-market housing to fill those gaps in our supply. We would be looking at establishing and maintaining good regional communication. And I think around that table, there is interest, what that could look like. Could that be, for example, a future coordination table on a regional basis to do that work? Local government focus again would also be focused around municipal engagement around community wealth and social financial approaches. And so I think it's a little out of our direct wheelhouse, but it certainly is adjacent. And I'll speak a little bit about where that sector is going. This really speaks to the idea that municipalities would be engaged in learning about these emerging techniques and determining how we might partner or bring some of them into our organizations. And then the development of a cohesive regional perspective on workforce, housing and associated needs and approaches. And so I think there, we've certainly had lots of discussion around workforce housing. And I know pre-terms on my, there have been some reports by others, the Mountain Village Association, for example. I think this is emerging as, as one of those things where we maybe have some further work to articulate how we envision that flowing. And then our community partners can join us in that with a little more clarity. On the community side, we are looking at community partners focused around building of local organizations and functions to support affordable housing at greater scale and looking at examples from across Canada. We are seeing emerging vehicles such as land trusts and community development corporations to support. We are seeing emerging vehicles such as land trusts and community development corporations to support in that work. Again, municipalities are not always resourced or or too old to do that work. And so those partners could assist. Linking of non market housing creators via community of practice. And so that is in place. And then we do have. Those folks already connecting through some of those institute tables. Support for local citizens groups to support affordable housing creation and municipal efforts. So offering some education. And we have seen some spin off interest in some of the local communities around the institute table. And I think those folks are helping to to encourage that change in consideration at the local level as well. We want to make sure I think that folks are informed and to love bringing good information and asking for reasonable things as well around those tables. So. Offering that support, I think, is important. And then preparation of a regional community wealth and social finance strategy. So this is work that the institute has on the horizon. And I think we could certainly be. Participating in some of those conversations as they further explore. How can we lend, spend and invest for greatest community benefit? And what I just noted in the report is that, you know, I think following the housing need assessment. It would be reasonable for us to consider what if these values perhaps could be embedded within the housing actually form or formally at the top. Super good discussion to come in. Uh, this one here. And so perhaps you've seen this out in the world, but if not, I would be happy to be the first one to tell you. That we have seen a community partner really take up that opportunity to engage. And so we have seen just last week an announcement by Community Foundation Great Bruce. They are working now to incubate a great first community development corporation. And they have, and I've outlined in the report, what they envision that C D C could do. So they are looking at some of that mentorship for community housing projects, exploring social finance tools like community bonds. Initiating developments and protection of affordable housing in great boots in a non competitive manner. And creating that space for further collaboration. And so, you know, I just, I wanted to highlight that as an example, and and thanks so much to Stuart Reed, their executive director, for working with me to coordinate the timing on this. So that we can make sure to share this good information through this report without stealing their thunder for the announcement last week. And what I would just highlight here is that they have hired a strategic initiatives consultant on housing. This individual does have experience with many bonds and has worked with Habitat Wealth previously in setting up their program. So. We're bringing some of these new skills into the area through this move. They'll start slow and small and seek to grow sustainably and organically. But we've we've got some help in terms of looking at that housing creation. Okay. And then further with respect to. To the nonprofit sector, it's kind of an evolution of that conversation. Is achieving scale for housing creation. And so we've included the section of the report around this. What I would note is that, so we are just kind of watching the rollouts of the Build Canada Homes program. At the federal level. So they are they're changing approach under under this new government with respect to how. Funding opportunities will be provided for housing creation, affordable housing creation. Looking at their initial documents and the sounding guide that they've shared. We do understand that there is their intention to gradually move to a system where. They are granting for large scale projects or portfolios of projects as opposed to individual one off applications. And so I think, again, just looking with an eye to the future of how might we need to position ourselves to engage with these funding opportunities on the go forward. I think we're recognizing that there may be some some necessity for. Like an amalgamation or or working together to agglomerate some of those projects under. One portfolio or a series of projects under one application. And so I think really just kind of seeing that idea here that there will be some further conversations happen around that. We're not a hundred percent sure how that funding will evolve, but actually just in coordination with the house, National Housing Day. They have just now this past weekend released the investment policy framework for both Canada homes. So. Think everyone's just digesting that at this moment in time. It does too speak to that gradual transition towards scale. So just a going consideration for us. And and we do also, just within that section of the report, speak a little bit to the existing provincial. Funding opportunities as well. There has been some advocacy work as they are considering how those might be retooled to better serve areas in rural Ontario like ours. So we'll see where that goes. Okay. And then finally, just the. Second component of that last half of the report speaks to finance innovation for affordable housing. Plus minutes, there we go. So with respect to this section of the report. We really just wanted to kind of highlight some of the work that is happening within the sector across Canada. So this is a homework, if we will, to poke around on some of those linked. Resources to get a flavor of what is happening kind of on that learning edge of social finance innovation. And what we were seeing and what's been included within that report. Is a highlight on some of those smaller financial opportunities. So community bond initiatives. And I've highlighted in a Simcoe example, Redwood Park Communities as one with an open bond campaign. I had an opportunity to to sit with their fund manager and hear about how they've actually structured that campaign and the different charges. Within the bond offering and the risk profiles and the management. And it's quite interesting. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there. To to set those up. And we're seeing that happen again across Canada. In addition to those smaller scale project specific tools, we're also seeing the establishment of larger revolving funds that are targeted towards housing as well. And so I've highlighted the CATS fund, which grew from a innovation lab in Hamilton around their L R T expansion. And really looks at bringing together different types of capital and investors to create a revolving fund. That can create seed funding and bridge financing for community housing creators. And I think with this one, again, looking out into the horizon, what's possible. We do have a lot of work happening around the energy frontier. Various institutional industrial partners with respect to that. I know certainly Bruce County is is thinking about the housing issues as well. And now we have this local CDC. And so. I could envision this being something I potentially in our future, maybe not right away. But but longer term in terms of innovation. So just again, trying to see those ideas to bring everybody along with that learning. So I'll leave I'll leave it there today. I'm certainly happy to speak to any questions that may arise. And really happy to do all of the traditional learning that would be coming along out of principle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lots in the report and also with what you've just provided for us verbally. So I'll just wait till the virtual members come back on my screen here. And we'll open up for questions. We'll begin with the deputy warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Liz, for the report and the update. I concur. With councillor Body that we don't. Tutor on horn enough about the work that is being done and potentially being done to. House more people affordably here in Gray County. So I think this report goes a long way to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? I will go to councillor Keveney and then we'll go to councillor Gray.
Thank you, Madam Warden and Liz. What an amazing report. Thank you for all of your efforts in this regard. I know through the conversations with the folks at the institute. That I know there's an importance attached to local affordable housing task forces. Some of us have them and some of us don't. And with the exceptional work that's happening at the county and through the Southern Georgia Bay Institute, and in particular, the Social Finance Group. I'm wondering if you feel there is still a necessity for each community to have its own task force. To be able to contribute locally to the to the conversation at this level.
Thank you very much and through you, Madam Morgan. So, you know, I, I, I think it's important to have a space to have conversations about what we're we're going to do, bringing in some of this information for learning. Translating that into tasks, assigning those tasks to individuals to be completed. I think about everything that the calling would affordable housing task force has achieved over the past number of years. And if you're not familiar, check with their website. They've got a whole lot going on. So, you know, I think there, I think there is certainly interest in a function for those committee. I don't know, you know, I think thinking to that idea of the regional. Coordination and collaboration, perhaps there's a circumstance in the future where we're moving to more of a regional table. I don't necessarily think that will replace the need to have some concerted effort and and space to have those conversations locally. But that could be an evolution in the meantime, without kind of that broader coordination table. I do think there's value to those, but of course it's still a local discretion. With respect to whether you have the resources to put that in place. But yeah, I would say that having that space and making that time to have those conversations would be important to this work at this moment. A lot of it is on that learning edge. So I think creating that space for those conversations. Thank you.
Councillor Gray.
Thank you, and thanks for the extensive report, Liz. It's a good update. I guess the background to my question, if there, there is one. But we are just undertaking a new official plan and zoning update in Owen Sound right now. So as part of preparing for that Monday night. I was just running some numbers. Because we get a lot of advocacy from a certain demographic about. The affordable housing initiatives. And everyone seems to fall into a certain, they're retired, they own their own homes, and they're speaking for young people. If you go to a restaurant and you just engage a bunch of young people, young people want the same opportunities that that we have. If you you talk to them, they want a little bit of yard. Maybe their own driveway to pull into. This is what they're wishing for. So in in terms of preparing for Monday. You know, if they go out and you just take a look at an average house right now. The starter home, four hundred and fifty thousand, they're going to need four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar mortgage. You run the numbers in that, which I did. That's eleven hundred and two dollars a month at a four sixty nine rate for five years. And over the first five years, they paid a hundred thousand in interest. So when they renew, they still have three seventy five. You you put thirty percent on that, that's ninety seven thousand dollars a year that's needed to sustain that thirty thousand dollar. A payment for their mortgage. And we haven't talked about insurance. We haven't talked about property taxes and the plethora of other costs that come along with that. We need to update our census data. I think the most recent one I see is twenty one. And in terms of an average or medium household income in Gray County, I think, or or Owen Sound, it could be. Wrong, but they're pretty close, is either seventy one or seventy thousand, seventy six thousand dollars. That's the average household income. Now that's skewed because you're taking in fixed income seniors and and so forth. But it's the average young person in our communities is not. Over a hundred thousand dollars. The the data doesn't show that. And when you're working on on this. Are the are the efforts only responding to the affordable housing? Or do you? Do you examine it? A little bigger than than just the affordable housing components. I think in in Owen Sound, maybe our numbers were seventeen percent of new apartments were meeting criteria. And if we want to work on behalf of some of the people in the community that just want to have their own house and have that opportunity. When you put a net, like an actual discretionary or disposable income, like after tax. They're like fifty percent of their income. Or greater, and we haven't talked about property taxes, insurance, like the essentials yet. So I feel like they're left out. And we're at, we're doing a lot of advocating for some of the market that we are are needing to meet the need for, and we are building new apartments. But at times, I'm afraid we're, we're, we're putting a lot of efforts here. And we're not recognizing that still, when you build an apartment. There's probably three hundred dollars minimum a month. I know in Owen Sound, on two hundred thousand dollars assessment, they're paying. Two, three thousand a month or a year in property taxes, and everyone has to pay their fair share. So that unit's got, you know, three hundred dollars a month approximately in taxes. It's got utilities. I just got off the phone about a week and a half ago with one of the large builders. And we're talking about every seven years, they have to budget for appliance. Replacement. So all these costs have to go into that unit. The general taxpayer can't pick that up. So there's a, there's, when you were talking about affordable housing. You already get to fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars really quickly. And we're talking about the capital needs that have to be put aside to. Do the renovations every so, and we do that with our own housing here. So we see it. I'm just wondering then, can you speak to how you do interpret those real life costs? Into your studies? And that missing middle that sometimes is out there. That I feel like the demographics, because all I have to work off is. I only have the numbers, the data needs updated. But we have to work off that data and respond to a lot of the segment in their population that just wants that same opportunity that we had.
Thank you, and to you, Madam Morgan. Excellent question. Thank you so much for that. So. So just I'll I'll pick up a couple of the data pieces and then can respond specifically to the question asked. So you're right. So median household income for Gray County is about seventy eight thousand dollars a year. So that is a data set that is amalgamated for both renters and owners. So if you actually split out those populations, the income profiles are very different. So I think median owner data would probably see your household income somewhere close to about ninety thousand dollars a year. Whereas if you're looking across that on a tenant's basis, you can essentially cut that median seventy eight. Sixty percent. So like I, I think in Newford, for example, the median rent or income is about forty six thousand dollars a year. So. So the, I think that's why we're talking so much around kind of the rental component, because the need is very acute. Those numbers really don't work for for households with tenant households. But I think you're right, that certainly what we're seeing come on in terms of new product for ownership housing. It's it's quite a bit above in terms of carrying costs. What we would see kind of affordable to that median households or even households in the sixth and seventh. Files household income. So we are seeing kind of that expectation, I think. There's going to be a lot of work in order for us to deliver on that expectation that the population or the youth coming up would have those same opportunities. The federal government does highlight that in some of their foresight reporting and speaking around the risks. To social mobility, if we see kind of existing trends going forward. And I think. The income side of the equation is is definitely something that collectively needs a look. Because as you're right, the costs are definitely increasing. You can get to that fourteen hundred dollars a door very quickly. But the people who are trying to access that housing might have the capacity to pay eight or nine. Even if they're working full time, twelve hundred dollars a month. So, you know, I think, I think that really does. Put a sharp focus on the need to look at that affordable piece. But I definitely take your point, and I think there is work ongoing relating to ownership product and how we can make that more affordable as well. And so there are some emerging models. Some of that is around shared equity mortgages. And so there are tools coming out where. You get kind of investment, whether it's through accessing grants or or pools of existing equity. And folks are able to kind of offer, it sounds like a second mortgage kind of. Product to help allow folks to get into that housing that would not find it affordable otherwise. I could definitely share some information around those ownership related tools too, if you'd be interested. I know the folks that are associated with Glassberg, they have a model around some of those affordable mortgages as well. So that one might be of interest. On to take a look at. So I guess not to go into all of the detail around those models, but just to say that there are some emerging models. Similarly, as we're looking at nonprofit. And those for the, we're in profit. Combined funds to create revenue and opportunity to fund that kind of housing. There are folks working on that ownership piece as well, and it is a very important consideration. Speaking to some of the data that we're looking at, you know, I think where there's been a big question mark, it's like, how do we define that attainable housing? Where that missing middle a little bit more. And so I. I've been working with me for staff actually in some back and forth to try and kind of detail that a little bit more. And so that really does kind of get it that what is. Affordable in a homeownership context for the most part. And so I, my hope is that through the housing need assessment, we'll be able to articulate that with a little more clarity in what we mean when we say affordable. This is attainable, but is attainable rental. This is attainable, but is attainable rental, right? So we know affordable, we're serving to a certain population and certain bestsides of household income. What about those renters? They're just a little bit above. They have constrained options as well, right? So it really is about that full spectrum. But I think the focus on the rental and deeply affordable is just because that need is so acute. And the cost factors are so challenging to navigate. So I'll perhaps leave that there, but happy to address the follow up or share additional information.
Yes, certainly, whatever kind of follow up, I think these questions that are being asked by one individual are in the heads of others as well. So I think the more that we share and the more that we can understand that and how we fit into this puzzle of so many different organizations, so many working groups, so many individual municipalities. And you're demonstrating the breadth of knowledge that you have of what's happening elsewhere and and how we can bring it home here to Gray County to share as efficiently as possible as well. So thank you for that offering to do that kind of follow up. We'll go to Counselor Boarden.
Thank you, Madam Boarden, through you. And thank you, Liz. Actually, you answered one of my questions in regards to attainable and affordable. We have that question asked all the time, is affordable? Social housing is attainable, even defined by the PPS. You know, we always look at to the province for what their definition of attainable is, and is it homeownership or is it home? Or is it rental? You know, is it eighty percent of market value? So I am glad that you're going down that path. Madam Boarden, as in her capacity as mayor, and I met with our largest ratepayers group, I believe it was last week when this report came out. So there are questions more around, number one, the fund, and is that strictly for affordable housing? Anything, any thought of introducing that levy into attainable? And number two is, under the CIP, how do you see that collaboration? Because I'm glad you mentioned affordable and attainable housing creation in the two. The collaboration, just in your one point four in in the CIP comment on page two. How does that, how do you see the tie in at the regional to the local level on the CIP? If you just extrapolate, that would be would be very advantageous. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, and to you, Madam Warren. So yes, I think that affordable attainable question has, it has been a pending question. And I know even just within some of the legislation, the province had floated, maybe we would see a definition of attainable coming in regulation. We haven't yet. So maybe they're struggling with that definition too. It's a tricky one because of how the datasets fall. So so maybe I'll start with the CIP question first and then come back to the one around the fund. So with respect to the CIPs, so as it stands right now, we have those documents in place at the local level. Each municipality has certainly worked from the county template, but we do see some variety at the local level around the programs offered. There's quite a bit of variety around how those plans are resourced. So some municipalities have ongoing annual contributions into to funding those programs. Others have kind of a declining balance pot of money they're working from. So there's quite a bit of variety there. With respect to housing programs, there are some examples. Blue Mountains does have a housing focused CIP as as one example locally. But I know elsewhere across the province, there are other housing focused CIPs. And oftentimes, they are, they are looking, well, at a variety of different housing types. Often conversions are addressed within within the CIP document. So we see those upper story conversions from office or storage base into rentals. I think the challenge with CIPs is just the scale of the funds that are offered. So we talked about how quickly a developer can get to quite a high cost threshold in unit creation. If we're offering a matching fund grant, it maybe maxes out at two or three or five thousand dollars relative to the overall costs. You know, that's a tiny drop in in the larger bucket. What I envision here for to go forward is, you know, when we're looking at those plan updates around those housing initiatives in the CIPs. I think that scale consideration needs to be a lens that we're looking through. Obviously, we have the resources that we have to put towards those. But I really am thinking that if we're able to kind of focus on the gaps within our particular community for those CIPs. And offering kind of a greater amount towards those applications to make a bit of an oomph to those projects, that could have some benefit. With respect to a county CIP. Well, that's all right. So we can have some conversation around what we might like to to look at focusing on with that. In the CIPs right now, you know, the tax incremental equivalent grant is one of the tools that does actually hit that scale. We have been delivering that in partnership at the county level too for our component of tax increases. And so that idea of, you know, is there an alignment between a potential future county CIP and those local CIPs? You know, maybe we're looking to stack them. Maybe we're looking to slightly tool them a little bit differently so that we're looking at different gaps. So perhaps the county CIP focuses on just the affordable and the local CIPs will be saw near market. I I think there's that opportunity to have further discussion around how we might tool those to align together. But ultimately, I do think they should be aligned together. We are looking to develop the county CIP. And then with respect to the fund, so my understanding, and I think Anne Marie Shaw is available if there are more detailed questions as well. But to date, my understanding is that the fund has very much focused around most vulnerable population. And so if you look at the projects that have been funded as are listed in the report. They are largely supportive transitional and deeply affordable partnered projects. My understanding is that was the intended focus for that fund. So I think if there was a discussion around other projects, that that would be a broader discussion to be had. I don't know. I think, but if you want to speak to that, if you could speak to that, if anyone could join us.
Go ahead, Director Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Boarden, and thank you, Liz. And certainly turned over to Anne Marie if there is anything. Just to Counselor Boarden's points and to some of Counselor Greg's points. I note that that a lot of what you see at council and a lot of sort of the community services portfolio, as Liz has mentioned, is 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 those most vulnerable and the deepest need. But I will say there's other things that county council has taken leadership on to support those attainable products. And the one that I'd point to is the the development charges exemption agreements that we enter into for for rental housing. And and so four years ago-ish, the county was seeing a distinct lack of rental housing being being created. And county council opted to to empower staff to enter into these development charges exemption agreements. Whereby, if somebody is providing purpose-built rental, and if they maintain that purpose-built rental for a period of time. Then they don't need to pay those county development charges. And and we have heard positive feedback from developers in in a number of our municipalities that said. This is one of the things that really tipped the balance to to helping choose to develop in municipality X in Gray County. And and those development charge exemption agreements for purpose-built rental housing don't come with any affordability threshold. So in some cases, they they wouldn't meet the provincial definition of affordable. But are probably in that slightly more nebulous definition that we don't have on paper of of attainable in that regard. And we've definitely seen a spike in in rental housing being built since then. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we have Director Shaw? Director Shaw, is there anything else you wanted to add, just while there's pause and questions from council?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Madam Warren. The fund itself is funded from the one percent levy, but it's also from the proceeds of our Westmount sales. So we do have some older housing built in the nineteen fifties that we are selling off and using the proceeds of that to provide seed funding for other housing. When the Affordable Housing Fund was developed by our task force on affordable housing, it was directed towards our most vulnerable. We do have a number of projects in line waiting for funding, and so that's where we have directed the funding from this point forward.
Okay, thank you for that background. And I'm just looking around. I don't see any further hands up here nor online. So given us lots to think about, and I think there is, there is an appetite to hear further from you in terms of follow up on this. And also, as there are new players in the loop as well, with like the the great news that comes from the community foundation, Gray Bruce, you know, to be able to jump into that. Economic sustainable aspect of it. How how can we make it work? So I think there's an appetite among the lower tiers and the various different working groups, et cetera, to be able to keep working together as has been established. And and to help walk through this, what is the difference? I I'm really glad that you did highlight, though, that no matter what definition we land on with attainable. That if we're helping workforce housing, we're also helping deep needs housing and vice versa. And, you know, and remembering that workforce housing goes beyond. It's also what seniors can afford when they're out of the workforce. But they'll have varying levels of what they can afford to live in as well. So I know we all see it. We're all just trying to navigate through this together. So thank you. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to receive for information. So I'll just ask, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you to all of the staff who have provided that information. Okay, so that takes care of item seven B. So we are now going to move back to the item that was pulled from the consent, right, Madam Clerk? Item sixty, oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, there's been a request for a break. I'm sorry, I was trying to race through thinking, you know, thinking ahead to the fact that we have our agenda items later this afternoon as well. Well thought. Yes, let's take a break for ten minutes and reconvene at ten to twelve. Thank you.
...
A report from the Western University shared that shared research completed on why the S O S model in Gray County has been so successful and its impacts across the community, which will only venture further as others try to replicate it. S O S received new funding from Health Canada to expand the operations to seven days a week, increasing access to harm reduction services for the vulnerable populations, and to support hiring more counselors and peer workers. And a new outreach vehicle will provide that mobile drug checking and education. S O S also received further additional funding from Health Canada up until our new year, March twenty-twenty-six, which will be used to pay for four social navigators to perform outreach in downtown Owen Sound. We saw the successful twenty-twenty-five Experimental Acres Project enthusiastically embraced by the agricultural community, so enthusiastic that there were fifteen applications submitted. And unfortunately, just six were able to be selected, all aiming at improving soil health, which explores practices that will enhance farming prosperity. Our climate adaptation program received a hundred and five thousand in grant funding. And within the county, we engaged a comprehensive work, comprehensive work on building a resilient Gray framework that includes actions Gray County can take toward adapting to the current and future impacts of climate change across infrastructure and community. And we also took, Gray County also took steps towards transferring some roads between the county and some local municipalities. Staff met with the municipalities involved, public engagement opportunities were held. Council approved a funding model for the transfers, which would include approximately fifty kilometers of roads, primarily in urban areas. And I add on this snowy morning that our staff worked exceptionally hard over twenty-twenty-five to maintain our roads during one of the toughest winters in recent years with exceptionally high snowfalls and significant weather. We also made progress on the Rockwood Terrace Long-Term Care Home. And we are now approaching, at this point, at the close of twenty-twenty-five, we are approaching fifty percent completed. Gray County's Long-Term Care Clinical Pathways Initiative officially reached the halfway point of its three-year implementation plan. This is a program developed by our registered, by the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario to embed best practice guidelines into daily care routines. Secondly, we celebrated the success of not just our program, our programs, but also of our people. Gray County was once again named the top, named to the top twenty-one intelligent communities of the year for the Intelligent Communities Forum. And six Gray County paramedics were recipients of the exemplary service medals. These awards received from the Governor General recognize experienced paramedics who consistently perform at an exceptional level. And six paramedics were presented with the Medical Director Accommodation Awards. The awards recognized the efforts of the paramedics going above and beyond while responding to a difficult and high-stress call. And our Gray County Director of Paramedic Services, Kevin McNabb, was presented with the twenty-twenty-four King Charles III Coronation Medal. And further, we celebrated that our Director of Long-Term Care, Jennifer Cornell, was appointed, was appointed as the Board Chair of Advantage Ontario to advocate for nonprofit long-term care homes and their residents, not just here in Gray County, but right across Ontario. Thirdly, we partner with our county neighbors, our own municipalities, and our community partners. Georgian College recognized Gray County with a Community Partner Award in April. And we continue to forge that partnership here in the county and side by side with the college in the marine, in the regional marine circles. Because as the Marine Center for Training and Research is recognized in the marine field worldwide, it is right here in the heart of our county. Even more so is the impact of this partnership with Georgian College locally. We heard from Director Myers about all of the collaborative efforts. We celebrate the healthcare professionals, trades, power engineering, E C Es, that are all able to pursue their educational goals right here locally and stay right here to work. Our county council met jointly with its member municipal councils to consider centralized planning services. And because of that, a report will be presented early in twenty-twenty-six, including recommended memorandums of understanding for the municipalities that are interested in opting into that centralized planning model. We also formed a joint municipal services committee, which formed to look at shared approaches to addressing challenges and opportunities that municipalities face. Gray County has also been participating in a pilot program through the Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness to help individuals with a history of chronic homelessness maintain their housing. This pilot will fund two staff positions at the county that will focus on supporting individuals when they move into housing. And Gray County supported the Town of the Blue Mountains in partnership in the administration of the Youth Climate Action Fund Program. Funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies, this fund made micro grants available to youth across the region to develop their own climate initiatives. Some of these selected projects include a living snow fence and community gardens at Saint Mary's High School in Owen Sound, water and woods restoration, pollinator education, backyard birdhouses, youth-focused earthkeeper, educational materials, and more. All of these were designed and led by the next generation of youth leaders in our communities. And this morning, we heard, too, from the success of the Youth Climate Action Conference that brings together our youngest residents, our youngest residents in partnership with the organizations and the volunteers, fifty-four, I heard this morning, that all came together to execute and organize that opportunity for our young people. We joined Dufferin and Wellington Counties to create consistent standards for developers across borders. We shared proposed future-ready development standards that were created to be voluntarily applied to future developments and with the goal of reducing construction admissions and preparing for upcoming changes to the building code. Gray County partnered with Bruce County and Dufferin County in Sawging Mobility Transit and secured nine point five million dollars in funding through the Ontario Transit Investment Fund to develop a regional transit network. The initial phase of study that we've been doing this year and a cost-unified regional transit network, using and building upon past transit insights and recommendations will guide us in the future decisions that we make about this network. We recognize the efforts of community partners who are meeting the needs of our residents. The county presented O Share with a certificate of appreciation for the organization's support of the S O S program. O Share has been providing their space in Owen Sound as the site of the Owen Sound S O S market and provides meals for the S O S community outreach markets in Owen Sound and Hanover. In twenty-twenty-four, they provided more than two hundred and twelve thousand meals. And we have further forged our relationships with our First Nations leaders and neighbors to the north and to the south of our county, whether it's chief to warden discussions and meetings or staff to staff or staff working with community members, such as what happens at Gray County, at our Gray Roots in Gray County. We learn from this journey of truth and reconciliation more and more each year as we build this relationship together. So as a council representing the county, I also noted that we raise our hands and we raise our voices. We speak for the small towns and the rural communities within our county by joining in with others to create a louder collective voice that resonates at the provincial and federal level. Around this table here, this horseshoe here, we have representatives at AMO, Roma, Ogra, the Great Lakes and Saint Lawrence Cities Initiative, the Clean Energy Frontier, the Medical Isotopes Collective, SWIFT, and the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. And furthermore, our staff are involved in the regional networks and initiatives. Like Director Savannah Myers and her team promoting Gray County as a member of a greater, as a member of greater regional partnerships. We share our best practices. The numbers of volunteers that we heard from Director Myers today, shared this morning is phenomenal as well. We are grateful for this example of dedication and love for our county. We received our 2024 paramedic services response time results to hear Gray County met or exceeded response time targets for all classes. But we still took action, recognizing the need to enhance response times and to meet increased and projected volumes of calls per service. So we celebrated the grand opening of the Durham Paramedic Services Base. We acquired the land and started building for the new paramedic services base in Feversham. Council received concrete data and results based on our efforts to help residents in need. A report from the Western University shared, that shared research completed on why the SOS model in Gray County has been so successful and its impacts across the community, which will only venture further as others try to replicate it. SOS received new funding from Health Canada to expand the operations to seven days a week, increasing access to harm reduction services for the vulnerable populations and to support hiring more councillors and peer workers. And a new outreach vehicle will provide that mobile drug checking and education. SOS also received further additional funding from Health Canada up until our new year, March 2026, which will be used to pay for four social navigators to perform outreach in downtown Owen Sound. We saw the successful 2025 Experimental Acres Project enthusiastically embraced by the agricultural community. So enthusiastic that there were 15 applications submitted and unfortunately just six were able to be selected, all aiming at improving soil health, which explores practices that will enhance farming prosperity. Our climate adaptation program received 105,000 in grant funding. And within the county, we engaged a comprehensive work, comprehensive work on building a resilient Gray framework that includes actions Gray County can take toward adapting to the current and future impacts of climate change across infrastructure and community. And we also took, Gray County also took, took steps towards transferring some roads between the county and some local municipalities. Staff met with the municipalities involved, public engagement opportunities were held. Council approved a funding model for the transfers, which would include approximately 50 kilometers of roads primarily in urban areas. And I add on this snowy morning that our staff worked exceptionally hard over 2025 to maintain our roads during one of the toughest winters in recent years with exceptionally high snowfalls and significant weather. We also made progress on the Rockwood Terrace Long-Term Care Home. And we are now approaching at this point, at the close of 2025, we are approaching 50% completed. Gray County's Long-Term Care Clinical Pathways Initiative officially reached the halfway point of its three-year implementation plan. This is a program developed by our registered, by the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario to embed best practice guidelines into daily care routines. Secondly, we celebrated the success of not just our program, our programs, but also of our people. Gray County was once again named the top, named to the top 21 intelligent communities of the year for the Intelligent Communities Forum. And six Gray County paramedics were recipients of the exemplary service medals. These awards received from the governor general recognize experienced paramedics who consistently perform at an exceptional level. And six paramedics were presented with the medical director accommodation wards. The awards recognize the efforts of the paramedics going above and beyond while responding to a difficult and high-stress call. And our Gray County Director of Paramedic Services Kevin McNabb was presented with the 2024 King Charles III Coronation Medal. And further, we celebrated that our Director of Long-Term Care Jennifer Cornell was reported, was appointed as the Board Chair of Advantage Ontario to advocate for nonprofit long-term care homes and their residents, not just here in Gray County, but right across Ontario. Thirdly, we partner with our county neighbors, our own municipalities and our community partners. Georgian College recognized Gray County with a Community Partner Award in April. And we continue to forge that partnership here in the county and side by side with the college in the marine, in the regional marine circles. Because as the Marine Center for Training and Research is recognized in the marine field worldwide, it is right here in the heart of our county. Even more so is the impact of this partnership with Georgian College locally. We heard from Director Myers about all of the collaborative efforts. We celebrate the healthcare professionals, trades, power engineering, ECEs that are all able to pursue their educational goals right here locally and stay right here to work. Our county council met jointly with its member municipal councils to consider centralized planning services. And because of that, a report will be presented early in 2026, including recommended memorandums of understanding for the municipalities that are interested in opting into that centralized planning model. We also formed a joint municipal services committee, which formed to look at shared approaches to addressing challenges and opportunities that municipalities face. Gray County has also been participating in a pilot program through the Canadian Alliance to End Homelessness to help individuals with a history of chronic homelessness maintain their housing. This pilot will fund two staff positions at the county that will focus on supporting individuals when they move into housing. And Gray County supported the town, the Blue Mountains in partnership in the administration of the Youth Climate Action Fund Program. Funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies, this fund made micro, micro grants available to youth across the region to develop their own climate initiatives. Some of these selected projects include a living snow fence and community gardens at St. Mary's High School in Owen Sound, water and wood, woods restoration, pollinator education, backyard birdhouses, youth-focused earthkeeper, educational materials and more. All of these were designed and led by the next generation of youth leaders in our communities. And this morning, we heard too, from the success of the Youth Climate Action Conference that brings together our, our youngest residents, our youngest residents in partnership with the organizations and the volunteers, 54 I heard this morning, that all came together to execute and organize that opportunity for our young people. We joined Dufferin and Wellington Counties to create consistent standards for developers across borders. We shared proposed future-ready development standards that were created to be voluntarily applied to future developments and with the goal of reducing construction admissions and preparing for upcoming changes to the building code. Gray County partnered with Bruce County and Dufferin County and Sogging Mobility Transit and secured $9.5 million in funding through the Ontario Transit Investment Fund to develop a regional transit, transit network. The initial phase of study that we've been doing this year and a cost-unified transit, regional transit network using and building upon past transit insights and recommendations will guide us in the future decisions that we make about this network. We recognize the, the efforts of community partners who are meeting the needs of our residents. The county presented O-Share with a certificate of appreciation for the organization's support of the SOS program. O-Share has been providing their space in Owen Sound as the site of the, the Owen Sound SOS market and provides meals for the SOS community outreach markets in Owen Sound and Hanover. In 2024, they provided more than 212,000 meals. And we have further forged our relationships with our First Nations leaders and neighbors to the north and to the south of our county. Whether it's chief to warden discussions and meetings or staff to staff or staff working with community members, such as what happens at Gray County, at our Gray Roots in Gray County. We learn from this journey of truth and reconciliation more and more each year as we build this relationship together. So as a council representing the county, I also noted that we raise our hands and we raise our voices. We speak for the small towns and the rural communities within our county by joining in with others to create a louder collective voice that resonates at the provincial and federal level. Around this table here, this horseshoe here, we have representatives at AMO, Roma, Ogra, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, the Clean Energy Frontier, the Medical Isotopes Collective, SWIFT and the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. And furthermore, our staff are involved in the regional networks and initiatives. Like Director Savannah Myers and her team promoting Gray County as a member of a greater, as a member of greater regional partnerships. We share our best practices, we learn from each other, we respond to the needs by forging relationships beyond our county boundary. And we all recognize that around this horseshoe, the work we do is impossible without the dedication and hard work of the staff who help us turn the decisions and directions that we make here into real results. That is behind every success that we celebrate here today. So to conclude, 2025 has presented us with both challenges and successes. We lean in when there is a challenge. We respond to needs. We deliver services to enhance the lives of our residents. We share in the stewardship of our lands and our waters. We weigh in carefully in our fiscal decisions. I am uplifted by this past year, by the commitment and the heart of each and every one of you that is sitting here today. And by the dedicated efforts of all the staff who help make a difference in people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. And in a moment, if I could ask you to join passport and echoes at the lectern for the presentation of the warden's pin.
I've been offered the privilege today of presenting in the tradition of all individuals who have served as warden of Gray County, the honor of a pin that now recognizes Warden Matrasov. For your work this year, you've become a past warden. Not officially, not officially until I believe next Tuesday, but very unofficially. This pin is worn by a select few in Gray County. A number of pictures that are on the wall at the back would indicate the photo, number of about 120 individuals since the incorporation of Gray County have been offered these pins. And I ask you, and I know you will, wear it proudly. Congratulations, Warden Matrasov. And if I could, could I move that the warden's address be incorporated into the minutes for eternity? Now, maybe. I'll let you make the, but I'll move that they be incorporated into the minutes. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. And thank you. I've heard it moved and I see councillor Dobrine is seconding the motion. Thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Gregg?
I would just like to add, what was missing there was how diligently you worked over the last year representing the county from the east to the west, to the north, to the south boundaries, and you enjoyed every moment of interacting with residents across the county. And it was obvious in the smile and in the attitude and in the energy which you demonstrated right from the start of your, your year to, to when you finished it. So well done and, and best wishes moving forward yet as you seek it again. And you've done a great job representing with so much enthusiasm the first year.
Thank you. So with that, may I call the vote? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. We are on to the close of our committee, the whole agenda. Notices of motion? Are there any notices of motion? Councillor Gregg?
I move that at the county council meeting of December 11th, county council consider adding evaluating countywide library services to the Joint Municipal Services Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other notices of motion? Not seeing any online, not seeing any here in the room. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Eccles, seconded by councillor Carlton. Any discussion? All those in favor? And committee of the whole is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.